Once again, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Village of Bartlett Committee of the Hall meeting for February 18, 2025. I call this meeting to order. Again, ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Trustee Daney?
Here.
Gansey?
Here.
Gunstein?
Here.
Hopkins?
Here.
Laporte?
Here.
Swansky?
President Wallace?
Here. We begin with our town hall portion of the meeting. If anyone would like to address any items that seem to be looking like they're going to be coming up on the committee meeting, kindly step up to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Would anybody like to address the committee at this time? Kevin?
Hello? Good evening again. My name is Kevin Romaco, Executive Director at Bartlett Park District. I guess first and foremost, it seems like the thing to do, so happy upcoming birthday to trustee Hopkins. So I want to make sure I get that in the record. You know, once again, as I said, I'm Executive Director at Bartlett Park District. I began in May of 2024, taking over from my friend and colleague Rita Fletcher after her illustrious career. Prior to that, I was Executive Director at Rowan Meadows Park District for four years. And actually, prior to that, I was Superintendent Business Services here at Bartlett Park District for three years. So again, I am here tonight to answer any questions once it comes up on the agenda that the board may have with respect to the park district's request to have the village use its home rule authority to exempt the park district from the Cook County paid leave ordinance. And I wanted to just take the quick opportunity to try to draw a little bit of a parallel of the position the park district is in, which is very similar to a position that the village was actually in in December of 2023. And in December of 2023, that's when the state was enacting, starting January 1 of '24, its own Paid Leave for All Workers Act. And as I mentioned last meeting, the park district was actually exempted from that. Park districts were exempted from that act, but municipalities, villages were not. And so, you know, the village had the same similar concerns the park district has about this Cook County ordinance. You know, I know the village, you know, was concerned about the undue burden it put on them as an employer, how it would negatively impact the village, and also impair the village's ability to provide timely and efficient services. And that's really parallel to what this would do to the park district as well. As I mentioned last time, the undue financial burden that it puts on the district, also the inequity that it creates for the district part-time employees, and that it's only Cook County and not DuPage, you know, DuPage County where we have a majority of our employees. So, you know, back in December of '23, the village astutely used its home rule authority to exempt itself from the state Paid Leave for All Workers Act, but then also, very smartly, also included verbiage in there, exempting from any future Cook County paid leave acts or ordinances. And so, you know, I just kind of wanted to bring that parallel to light and trying to better explain as best I can to the situation that, you know, the park district is facing with the Cook County paid leave ordinance and why we are coming to the Board of Trustees to exempt us from that ordinance under their home rule. So, thank you very much. And again, I'll be here to answer any questions once it comes on the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Director. You had some big shoes to fill.
Yes, they are.
Before we go any farther, I don't know if it's allowed to have two Palmers in the meeting at the same time.
Yeah, that's true.
All right. So, first item that we have. Anybody else like to address the board at this time? Dominic, is there anyone online that would like to address the committee meeting?
No one online.
Thank you. Moving right along, standing committee reports. License and Ordnance Committee Chairman Hopkins.
Thank you, President Wallace. We have one item on our agenda, and that is the Bartlett Park District Paid Leave for All exemption. We talked about this in length at two meetings ago. It was turned down. The Paid Leave for All Workers Act was enacted by the State of Illinois in 2023. The Paid Leave Act generally requires employers to provide employees with paid leave at a rate of one hour for every 40 hours worked, including part-time employees. The Paid Leave Act specifically and expressly excludes park districts from complying with the mandatory paid leave requirement. While the Cook County Paid Leave Ordinance largely mirrors the state Paid Leave Act, the Cook County Paid Leave Act ordinance does not exempt park districts from complying with the paid leave requirements. With that, is there any questions from anyone on the committee?
I just would wonder why we would have any problem with helping the park district out. I just don't quite understand why we have that problem. I wasn't here at the meeting. I'm a little bit disappointed that we have a problem with something so simple as this. That's my opinion.
I would like our attorney fees that we that our attorney has invested in this to be charged back to the park district. It's their request, and I think they should fund it.
I'm sure that's not a problem.
I think the community has to support one another. I remember years ago when we had, so to speak, a little conflict with the park district, and everything is going along well now. The village is here to serve its residents. The park district is here to serve its residents. And I think we have to work hand in hand. And, you know, I'm not wouldn't change the way I felt about this from the first time we looked at it. I think that the two districts have to the two entities have to work together, and they all benefit our residents. And that's what we're elected for. We have to represent our residents. And they're doing an excellent job. And I think that they need our support. And I think, you know, we should work with them on this. That's the way I feel about it.
I agree.
I have no problem forwarding this on to the village board for a vote. We obviously aren't going to vote on it tonight.
I think trustee Laporte has a comment.
I was just going to say, I don't think the Cook County taxpayers need any more increase in taxes. So I feel if Cook County gets their way, it's just going to could increase the taxes for the Cook County portion of our city. And I don't think they should have to pay that.
Good point.
I'd just like to throw out there. I don't feel like people had a huge problem. I think there were questions, and I think it was just the process to go through it. So it was nice to hear it was nice to hear more information, and I think it brought more to light. So thank you for that, for the extra information.
Yeah, maybe we rushed through it and explained it quite well enough. So my bad. Good.
Any other questions? Then we'll forward this on to the village board for a vote. That's all we have under licenses and ordinances tonight.
Thank you, Chairman Hopkins. Finance Committee Chairman Laporte, live from Las Vegas.
Good evening. We're about to go through the fiscal year 2025-2026 proposed budget presentation, and I'll hand that off to staff to kind of go through.
Thank you, trustee Laporte. So I'm on a time clock here, so I'm going to get get right to it here. So again, this is the 25-26 proposed budget presentation. So our timeline for the next month and a half. So first, our plan is to get the proposed budget to the board on Friday. We're just wrapping up a few things. Tonight is this budget presentation. I'm just going to do a quick overview, go through some revenues and fund balances. The next meeting on March 4th, don't forget, it's an early start at 6 o'clock. And we will be doing the department reviews. So the chief graciously volunteered to go first. So we have police, then planning and development, central services, and our newly created information systems department. And then if we have time, we're going to wrap it up with golf. The next board meeting, March 18th, will continue with public works, professional services, finance, and administration. April 1st-
Paula, you realize that by the time we get to administration, there's not going to be any money left. You probably shouldn't have went last.
April 1st, we're going to have our public hearing and hopefully adopt the 25-26 budget. We are on the budget officer system, where the budget has to be passed before the start of the fiscal year. So if it's not passed at this board meeting, we still Okay, and to the numbers. So the budget overview. Total revenues came in at 73.426 million. This is down 1.869 million, or 2.48% from last year's budget. Total expenditures came in at 80.74 million. This is down 4.87 million, or 5.69% from last year's budget. So the main reason the overall budget for the overall budget changes are due to the wastewater treatment plant rehab project being completed. So we are no longer drawing down on the 2020 IEPA loan that financed this project. So that is why the revenues are going down. And then obviously expenditures are going down because we don't have those construction expenses anymore. Other reasons are the Devon Excess Flow Project should be about wrapped up by the end of this year. And then also, the Gulf Irrigation Project was completed. Where the money comes from. So again, total revenue is 73.4 million. Thirty-two percent of that is coming from charges for services. So that's our enterprise funds. That's water, sewer, parking, and golf. Thirty-one percent is coming from other taxes. So that's income, sales, use, telecom, real estate, MFT, and gaming tax. Eighteen percent is coming from property taxes. Eight percent is coming from other revenues, which is our licenses, permits, franchise fees, and miscellaneous. Eight percent is interest, and then three percent is our borrowings, which this year is just the Bluff City Tiff Developer Note. Where the money goes. Total expenditures, 80.74 million. This goes 26% goes to capital projects for water, sewers, streets, the Tiff, and other. Twenty-five percent goes to public works. Twenty-four percent, public safety. Eleven percent, general government. So that's administration, planning and development, finance, and professional services. Ten percent is our debt service. So that's the GO bonds for the police station, fire station, village hall, et cetera. And then four percent is golf. This is just a chart showing the revenue and expenditure history for the last 10 years. So the black line is the revenues. So you could see these last two years, it's really come down. And again, that's because of the IEPA loan. We're receiving not as much in fiscal year '25 and none in fiscal year '26. The red bar is our operating expenditures. So you could see that's really gone up these last few years. So in fiscal year '25, it went up for a variety of reasons. One is we had that backlog of vehicles we were waiting on. I think it went back over almost three budgets. We received all our vehicles. That was almost $2 million we received this year, all the vehicles. Police personnel had a decent jump with the police union agreement being finalized. So we had a bunch of retro pay in this current year. Police pension payments went up with all the retirements we had, and the DuPage Water Commission commission costs went up as well. For this year, fiscal year '26, it's going up mainly due to starting to pay back the sewer IEPA loan, which is going to be about $2 million a year. And then the blue bar is our capital expenditures, which again are going down due to the wastewater treatment plant and Devon sewer projects wrapping up. Operating expenditures by type. So 51% is for personnel. That includes 4.2 million for police pension. And for actual services is at 21%. The big one there is the DuPage Water Commission water bill. Twenty-one percent for other charges includes our debt and liability insurance. And then we have four percent for commodities and capital Now I'm just going to go through some of our major funds, starting with the general fund. So total revenues in the general fund are 33.115 million. This is an increase of 818,000, or 2.53% from last year's budget. The main reason for the increase is we are budgeting for a full year of auto mall sales tax. And then there was also a slight increase to the income tax. Just a reminder on the auto mall sales tax, 50% is going back to the auto mall for the rebate agreement. And the other 50% is going to the 59 and Lake Tiff to repay the loan from developer deposits, sewer, and municipal building funds. This loan dates back to 2006 and was used to purchase land. The balance is at about $4 million. Total expenditures is at 31.753 million. This is an increase of 4.59 million, or 16.91% from last year's budget. Again, as we've talked about, this is coming from the capital budget. The funds are coming out of the general fund. So again, this is the town center improvements, Route 59 underpass bike path, downtown sidewalk renovation, and sidewalk improvements, and stormwater improvements. So you're going to see this when Dan and Tyler present the streets budget. Net transfers out was 5.427 million. This is mainly the police pension levy. The money comes into the general fund, and then we transfer it out to the police pension fund. Also includes central services and transfers to central services and vehicle replacement. So our expected fund balance is 20, 20.57 million. Again, this is a decrease of 4 million. As we've talked about, this is coming from the capital budget. The board saw this at our last board meeting, so I'm not going to really get into it. But the blue bar is our estimated fund balance. So again, by '28, '29, you see it really dipping below the minimum. And again, this is why we are seeking to increase our home rule sales tax. I wanted to show this slide to show that 80% of our general fund revenues come from four sources. So 24% is coming from our general corporate property taxes. 24% comes from income taxes. 20% from regular sales tax, and 12% from our home rule sales tax. I'm just going to go through these major general fund revenues. So again, the general corporate property tax budget is 7.269 million. So this is the amount we're going to bring to the board next October for the 2025 levy. So this is no increase from the 2024 levy. The last increase was for the 2023 levy in the amount of $750,000. And again, this was to capture the taxable value from the closing of the Brewster Creek Tiff. State income tax, or LGDF, we are budgeting 7.25 million. This is an increase of 225,000, or 3% from last year's budget. The state distributes this on a per capita basis. Until January 2011, 10% of total state collections were distributed to municipalities and counties. Currently, the percentage is 6.47%. We get our estimates from the Illinois Municipal League, and their latest per capita estimate is $178.27. So that's how we came up with the 7.25 million. Regular sales tax, we are budgeting 5.9 million. This is an increase of 950,000, or 19% from last year's budget. The village receives 1% of the 6.25% state rate on purchases made within the village. So the increase, as I mentioned before, is based on budgeting for a full year of the Bartlett Auto Mall sales tax. It's also based on this act that went in effect on January 1. It's called Leveling the Playing Field Act 2.0. So this act was designed to level the playing field between Illinois-based retailers and remote retailers by imposing state taxes on both, not just Illinois-based retailers. So some revenue that we collected as local use in the past will now be collected as sales tax. I take this as a good thing because I think it'll also increase our home rule as well. And then just a reminder, our state grocery tax or the state grocery tax was eliminated. And that will start January 1, 2026. We're estimated to lose approximately 250,000 annually. And then home rule sales tax. Again, this revenue source will be brought up at the next board meeting to increase the home rule rate from 1% currently to the 1.75%. But as of now, our rate is 1%, so my budget numbers are going to reflect that. We are budgeting 3.5 million. This is an increase of 500,000, or 17% from last year's budget. So the village receives the 1% on general merchandise purchases within the village and some online purchases. No grocery, no medical. Taxes collected by the state and distributed to the municipalities. The increase is based on trends and what we are currently collecting. Home rule tax began in Bartlett in July 2018. And then our next three big or three next biggest revenue sources are building permits, local use, and interest. Building permits, we are budgeting 900,000. This is an increase of 50,000, or 6% from last year's budget. So this is based conservatively on 120 new residential construction permits at grasslands and six commercial permits. Local use, budgeting 800,000. This is a decrease of 900,000, or 53% from last year's budget. Again, this is due to that level leveling the playing field act. So again, we're not losing this money. We're just collecting it as sales tax. So we receive this revenue based on a per capita rate. The latest IML update was $19.60. This is down from $42.18 last year. We are budgeting 800,000 for interest income. This is an increase of 50,000, or 7% from last year's budget. But it's so it's up from the budget. It's down from our current year estimate of 1.2 million. The Federal Reserve did reduce the Fed rate by 100 basis points in 2024. So we have started to see interest rates come down, but we will continue to keep an eye on that going forward. On the motor fuel tax fund. So total revenues, 3.15 million. This is an increase of 965,000, or 44% from last year's budget. The reason for the increase is we are budgeting 980,000 for a surface transportation program grant. Total expenditures are 6.2 million. This is an increase of 4.5 million, or 16.91% from last year's budget. And as we talked about the last board meeting, this is due to budgeting 4.275 million every other year for the MFT maintenance program. So this is the year we are budgeting for that. Expected fund balance, 3.795 million. This is a decrease of 3.3 million, again, due to this capital improvement. This is another chart you the board saw at the last board meeting. So again, the green is the estimated balance. So by '28, '29, we're getting pretty low, and that's why we are requesting the municipal motor fuel tax of 3 cents per gallon. MFT fund revenues are the MFT allotments, which are budgeting for 1.8 million. This is an increase of 10,000, or 1% from last year's budget. The state distributes this on a per capita basis. Their latest estimate is $44.74 for fiscal year '26. And again, we have that grant for $980,000. Everyone still awake? Water fund overview. So total revenues, 13.691 million. This is an increase of 140,000, or 1% from last year's budget. Total expenditures are 15.55 million. This is a decrease of 3.324 million, or 17.61% from last year's budget. The expenditures are down due to the water main replacement program budget of 3.5 million being done every other year. So this is an off year. Fund balance, expected fund balance is 4 million. This is down again to due to big water capital projects. The big ones this year are 2.25 million for the water meter changeout program, which I believe is going to be finished early in '26, '27. And then there's the water tower painting of a 985,000, which is for the Stearns Road So our water fund fund balance chart here. So the blue is the minimum balance, red is the maximum, green is our estimated balance. So I'm going to say this chart is a little misleading. So this chart was based on our capital budget. But Todd pretty much took out the water main replacement program to make it work with the funds we currently have available. So in '26, '27, we would normally budget the 3.5 million for the water main replacement program. This only has 700,000 budgeted. And '28, '29, the project was pulled completely. So I think obviously this project needs to be done. So if we added it back into the fund balance, by '28, '29, we would be at a negative 4 million. So again, this is why we will be doing a water sewer study.
What project are you speaking of?
This is the water water main replacement project. So we budget 3.5 million every other year.
And why did Mr. Doughton take it out?
During the capital discussion, we put together, if you'll recall, we had year one was funded with the funds that we had currently in reserve in that. But years two through five, we assumed no rate increase or revenue source, additional revenue source of whether general fund, water, or sewer. So we showed years two through five of basically depleting the reserves to a point where it got below with the idea that we had to do a water and sewer rate study to determine what we need to do to basically fund that capital program, just like we're doing on the general fund side with the home rule sales tax and the gas tax. Similar type things. So you'll be seeing the water and sewer rate study information shortly. The plan is to get that done by this fall so that when we get into discussions of capital again, we would start to look at what options you would like us to do to fund that those programs. Right. We slowed them down just based on assuming no rate increase or no revenue source. So if the board chooses not to generate any revenue, then we would continue to slow, you know, due to smaller projects. But if we find revenue source, we'll adjust the budget according to what's being brought
Our water fund revenues, charges for services. So that's what we bill for water, as well as water connection charges and water meter sales. So we're budgeting 13.49 million. This is an increase of 90,000, or 1% from last year's budget. This is just based upon consumption history with no proposed rate increase for this year. The last rate increase was effective May 1, 2023, and it was for 3%. The average residential monthly water bill in the proposed budget is $75.60, and this is based upon 6,000 gallons of usage. Again, and then for interest, we're budgeting 200,000. For the sewer fund, total revenues are 7.335 million. This is a decrease of 3.35 million, or 32%. Again, this is due to the wastewater treatment plant being completed. So we are no longer drawing on the 2020 IEPA loan. Total expenditures are 8.98 million. This is a decrease of 5.8 million, or 39% from last year's budget. Again, this is due to the completion of wastewater treatment plant and the Devon Excess Flow Project will hopefully be completed by the end of this year as well. So the expected fund balance is 5.223 million. This is a decrease of a little over $2 million. And again, this is due to budgeting 2 million for the Country Place Lift Station rehab, as well as we're starting to pay back that 2020 IEPA loan, which is about $2 million a year. Here's the sewer fund balance policy. Again, the blue is the minimum, red's the maximum, green is what we estimate our balance to be. So by '28, '29, again, we're just we're dipping into the negatives. Again, a lot of this is just due to the $2 million yearly repayment of the IEPA loan. Again, a lot of this is just due to the $2 million yearly repayment of the IEP A loan. Sewer fund revenues, so charges for services, 7.7.19 million. This is an increase of 290,000 or 4% from last year. This is based upon consumption with no proposed rate increase. The last rate increase for sewer was effective May 1st, 2022. And that was 5.1% for Cook County and 8.6% for DuPage County. Average residential monthly sewer bill in the proposed budget based upon 6,000 gallons is $25.78 for Cook, $46.96 for DuPage, and $19.19 for Kane. We are budgeting $120,000 for interest. Golf fund, total revenues, 3.412 million. This is a decrease of 1.122 million or 25% from last year budget, last year's budget. This is due to the irrigation project being completed. So Gulf is no longer receiving the loan from the Developer Deposits Fund. Total expenditures are coming in at 3.198 million. This is a decrease of 1.1 million. Again, this is due to the irrigation system being completed. Expected fund balance is negative 1.066 million. This budget is reducing that negative balance by $145,000. We know Gulf was hit really hard by the pandemic. We're trying to climb our way out of that. Fiscal year 24 is one of Gulf's better years. So they had a positive change in fund balance of just about $250,000. So we're just going to hope that trend continues here. The golf course revenues, we are budgeting 1.77 million. So again, this is your 18-hole, nine-hole, season passes, cart fees, range balls, and the simulator. So the revenue is based upon estimated golf rounds as well as various rate increases. So you could see our golf rounds are continuing to do really well since COVID. So again, we hope that trend continues. Pro shop sales, so that's your clothing, golf balls, golf gloves, et cetera. The budget is 94,000, no change from last year. Food and beverage revenue is coming in at 1.291 million. This is an increase of 63,000 or 5% from last year's budget. So the increase in revenue is based on 38 to 45 weddings. This is about eight more weddings than we've had in prior years. Again, from this chart, you can really see how food and beverage sales have taken off since COVID. So again, that's a trend we hope continues here in the future. Last but not least, our internal service funds. So we have our central services fund. We made a few changes in this year's budget. We created an information systems department. So that's our IT and GIS staff. So their salaries have always been charged to central services. There's no change there. The only real change was they were part of the finance department. So now they're their own department within the central services fund. We also moved some items out of central services that we felt didn't really belong there to begin with. So these were items like the printing of the Bart letter, code red, village weeds enforcement, and then police building maintenance. A lot of these items were moved to departments within the general fund, mainly administration and police. And these items totaled $174,900. Our transfers into central services were 1.727 million. This is no change from last year's budget. The vehicle replacement fund, we have a total of eight vehicles scheduled to be replaced in this budget totaling $850,000. And again, all our vehicles that were on back order, we have received in our current year. So that's good news. Transfers into vehicle replacement are $783,132. This is up 14% from last year. The main reason for this is I increased the streets transfer into the vehicle replacement fund by 150,000. The price of their plow trucks has almost doubled in cost. So that's the reason for that. And to conclude, so we are presenting the board with a balanced budget with a used fund surplus that is within our budget policy. This includes no new taxes or fees as of yet. No increase to the general corporate property tax levy, no proposed water or sewer rate increases. Personnel costs include a 3.75% cost of living increase for non-union employees. And again, our capital improvement projects totaled 21, 21 million. That's all I have. I would just like to end with thanking especially Paula and all the department heads and staff for making this seamless transition for me this first time. I really appreciate it. And again, next month, we'll be going into this all in detail. But I'll be happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Thank you, Matt.
We have a lot of them. Let me go through it.
Thank you.
So yeah, just to reiterate the timeline that we have here, Matt. So that's the overview. February 18th, March 4th, we'll start the department reviews, item, line item by line item. So sharpen your pencils.
How much do we have to think, like looking ahead to the future, obviously does not look great. So like, what are we looking for this year other than raising all the different taxes? So what are things that?
We definitely have a lot of infrastructure projects this year and going forward, as we've talked about. So I think it was to be expected. We do have a good cushion to work with here with our fund balances, but that is again why we're looking at revenues going forward.
Because we've won awards in the past, right? Like the GFOA?
Don't confuse this with our audit. He's just giving the raw numbers with no increase in any type of fees, taxes, or anything else.
I'm not confused.
No changes. The financial situation is solid when it comes to our overall picture of the village. He shows these balances going down just so we can prepare for what's going to happen in the future if we don't make any changes or adjustments. And small changes can make a huge difference. Now, one fund balance, $2 million puts it right back in, in '27, '28. So.
I do want to reiterate too, usually we end up a lot better than what we project just because we're conservative on our revenues and we never reach our.
It looked like we were really good, like we were in really good standing with the COVID money, but now that that's gone, like the level playing field.
Yeah, the COVID money definitely helped our position, and we've seen an increase in sales tax numbers and income tax numbers. So we've been trending in a really good direction. I think it's just these infrastructure projects. You know, I mean, was it the Country Creek? Country, what's the?
Yeah, Country Creek.
Sewer project. I mean, that's $9 million right there. I think that'd be tough for any village to sustain those kind of numbers. But again, we've built up a really good balance here, so.
And Country Creek doesn't have any other, like outside funding?
To keep people's backyards from falling into the creek. I, we've looked, we have looked at some grants for it.
Right now, what we're showing is none, but we are trying to turn every rock in every place that we possibly can to try to find some revenue to help fund some of that project.
All right, if there's no additional questions, we can look forward to March 4th at 6:00 PM, the department reviews.
We're starting early.
Dinner's at 5:30.
Did you have some more? Anyone else? All right. Thank you, Chairman Laporte. If that entertained a motion to adjourn. By trustee Daney, seconded by trustee Gansey. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Daney?
Yes.
Gansey?
Yes.
Gunstein? Hopkins?
Yes.
Laporte?
Yes.
Swansky?
Yes.
We are adjourned.